Good evening. Can people hear me? I always like to check my. Since that one time.
Yeah.
I'm always checking. Okay.
Hello, everybody.
Hi.
Hello, Commissioners, Zister. Who do we have here? All right. We have. We have Colville.
We have all seven.
Oh, great. Okay, thank you. I didn't see. Seven. Is Commissioner Rivlin here?
Yes, Commissioner Rivlin's here.
Excellent. All right. Hi, everybody. Good evening. And welcome to the Planning Commission meeting of August 24. I'd like to call this meeting to order. This is a regular Planning Commission meeting that will be conducted via telecommunication and is compliant with provisions of the Brown Act, an executive order, and 29-20 issued by the Governor. Corinne, may we have a roll call vote, please?
Alphabetical order, Commissioners, Bookbinder. You're blocked.
Present. Can you hear me? Hello? Okay.
Commissioner Polville.
Present.
Gray.
Here. Here.
Mr.
There.
Vice Chair Ching.
Yeah.
Carol Strasky.
Here.
All present.
Thank you. Alrighty, next item are the approval of the minutes. Does anyone have any corrections or modifications to the minutes from the last meeting? Alrighty, in that case, would someone like to make a motion for approval of the minutes?
I'd like to move to approve the minutes as they appear in our in our packet.
Wonderful. And a second?
I'll second.
All right, Corinne, may we have a voice vote, please?
Bookbinder.
Hi.
Hi.
I better abstain, just for the record.
Okay. Rivlin. Zister.
Hi.
Vice Chair Ching.
Hi.
Carol Strasky.
Hi.
It's 6001. What objection?
Great, thank you. And we'll move to the communications. Director Eastwood, do we have any communication agenda items or post comments for the Planning Commission this evening?
Hi. Good evening, Chair Strasky, Honorable Commissioners, Rob Eastwood, Community Development Director. So we, we do have some communications. I hope you've all caught. I know we have a communication from the applicant for the first item. We had a communication from the neighbor. And Commissioner Gray has some good questions for staff. We responded that. We CC'd all the commission. It was good guidance for the item tonight. So I want to make sure you have that. If you need some extra time at all to read that as you're starting your first item, totally understand that. But those are the communications we hope you have, and outside of that, no further modifications or additions from staff. Thanks.
Great, thank you. Anybody need any additional time? I know some of those came in a little bit later. Alrighty. Okay, we'll move to the oral request section of the meeting. This is the point in the agenda where any member of the public may address the commission on an item that isn't on the agenda. You may speak for up to five minutes, but the Planning Commission may not take any action today. Would anyone like to speak?
It looks like we have somebody in the, in the waiting room with the hand up. So. Go ahead and let Roxanne do, I can't see her whole name. By this here, hooking permitted.
Roxanne Dubois.
Hi, can you hear me?
Yes.
Okay, so I live on Robnik Court.
Well, now Roxanne, just to confirm, this is the oral request for the topics that aren't on the agenda. If I'm not mistaken, you're speaking on item one, or you've communicated about item one, and that will be coming up. So I just wanted to clarify that, Roxanne.
All right, then I'll withdraw my comment.
Alrighty. Okay, anybody else wants to comment on an item not on the agenda this evening? So. Thank you. In that case, I'll close the public hearing, and we will move to the meeting agenda. Before we get started, does anyone have any disclosures regarding this evening's item? All right, seeing none, our first topic for the evening is the public hearing to consider the application PLN 2021-31 of Michelle Minor designed for a site and architectural review permit to allow construction of an approximately 4,475 square foot two-story, single-family dwelling on property located at 1327 Frida Court in the R1-9 Single Family Residential Zoning District, and our planner for this item is Daniel Fama. Welcome, Daniel.
Thank you. Good evening. So this is an application for a site and architectural review permit. So let me share my screen here. All right, so site and architectural review permit for item one, property located at 1327 Frida Court. This is a approximately 9,300 square foot, single-family residential parcel located on Frida Court, south of Hossi and the Avenue within the R19 Single Family Zoning District and the Low Density Residential General Plan Land Use District, and within the boundaries of the Santa Moss area and neighborhood plan. You can see the property boundary is outlined on the aerial map. The proposal before you is an application for a two-story, single-family dwelling with an interior ADU totaling 4,475 square feet of building area that consists of approximately 3,300 square feet for the primary living space, 452 square feet for the attached garage, and 700 square feet for the interior ADU. The project proposes a two-car garage as a lock coverage of 31%, which is below the 35% maximum, and FAR of .48, which does exceed the otherwise maximum .45. But as discussed in the staff report, the city has taken the position that the state law provisions that allow for an ADU to be constructed to the extent possible for 800 square feet does effectively allow for an increase of 800 square feet of building area beyond the .45 FAR and the 35% lock coverage. In this particular case, it is only the FAR that is being reached. With regard to this particular proposal, we have a contemporary-style-designed house incorporating an L-shaped juncture characterized by a notable bend and rounded two-level features, one clad in stone. The home is shown with standing seam metal roofing with hip roof lines, except for a small gable feature shown here clad in wood. The house would have two balconies, covered deck, provide amenity space for the residents, and an exterior stairway. That's the one visible on the back left over here for access to the upper level ADU. The plans also show preliminary landscaping irrigation drawings. These are generally conceptual at this point. Part of the building permits, middle, final landscape drawings, what need to be submitted. This pertains somewhat to one of the neighbors' letters regarding landscaping along that edge. There is a condition for approval that requires planting of five trees as directed by staff. So we will certainly require some of those trees be planted along the southerly property line to provide some visible cover from the opposite side of the property. But the planning commission does retain the ability to require additional screening and landscaping if it feels necessary. Just in terms of context for the plant commission's review, this project is subject to the Housing Accountability Act. This is a state law that limits the city's ability to deny, reduce the density for our rendering feasible housing development, which this project does constitute, unless the proposal is found to be in violation of an objective general planner zoning standard or would otherwise result in a specific adverse impact to public health and safety. But there is an allowance for the city to approve a project with a condition of approval that do incorporate subjective design requirements, including those that could reduce the floor area of the proposed house, provided they do not undermine the basic objective of the project, which is construction of a two-story house with an ADU. So as it pertains to the scope of the Housing Accountability Act, as discussed in the staff report, arguably, the proposed house does not comply with various aspects of the city's Santa Moss area neighborhood plan design guidelines. These are subjective design standards, but in particular, this home arguably does not comply with the provisions dealing with overall compatibility, and that incorporates complex shapes not commonly found within Santa Moss area. The rounded features in particular incorporates a tall two-story element, which again is a rounded feature. And overall, the massing is fairly large in comparison to adjacent homes, and does incorporate a vertical design emphasis that does accentuate the height of the house. And as you can really see at the bottom of the slide, there would be a pretty noticeable distinction with the neighboring homes. Now, staff is of the opinion that in the spirit of the Housing Accountability Act, that moving forward, the city should apply only objective standards, and we are working to modify the Santa Moss plan to effectively make a lot of these guidelines more objective, so they are more generally applicable moving forward. And as such, the recommendation is for approval as the plans are currently presented. But as noted, within the scope of the Housing Accountability Act, the planning commission does have the ability to, as a condition for approval, impose certain design standards that try to address the overall size and design of the house in a manner that can be found more consistent with the Santa Moss area neighborhood plan design guidelines. If the majority of the commission wishes to go down that road, it would be advisable for the commission to provide very specific direction to staff in terms of the types of changes the commission would like to incorporate. Most likely, it would be necessary to continue the public hearing, so that direction can be formalized in a revised draft resolution and could be brought back at a subsequent meeting. In conclusion, staff does recommend that the planning commission adopt the resolution, have proven a site and architectural review permit. Thank you. Chair Strasky, you're muted.
Thank you very much, Daniel. I'll open it up to the commission to ask questions about this application. Who would like to start?
Yeah, yeah. If I may start. Daniel, I was listening very closely to your presentation, and I think I got it all. So when you say, I'm trying to be kind of specific, and I know that we're going into the objective standards. Thank God for that. We applaud that, but. Okay, so in your, in your report just now, you say arguably the house as design does not comply with stamp, but the city staff is still recommending approval because and the reasons for that is because we're moving to objective standards in which this would then conform and work.
Well, the intent of the Housing Accountability Act is really focused, the city's decision, on objective standards. So FAR, a lot of coverage setbacks, and this project does comply with that. And that's the thrust of the state law. Now, there's obviously some ability here to modify the design based on some level of subjectivity. Inherently, subjectivity is an arguable discussion point. People will disagree on it.
Yeah, let me just follow up just real, and I got you, Daniel. That's good. And then I know that the applicant showed some pretty good, really nice examples of some other houses with this kind of design. It's kind of a circular and, and vertical and kind of has the, I don't know if turret's the right word for the, for the angle, for the steep roof, roof. And I know, and I know those, some of those houses that he showed, most of them, but are any of those also in the Santa Moss area and neighborhood?
So I believe the image with the turrets actually was one of the projects that led to the creation of the Santa Moss plan in the first place. It was an attempt to try to minimize that type of development in the future. And it should also be noted, just in terms of design, and this is picked up in the guidelines as well. Just because a house is designed and approved in a certain location doesn't necessarily mean it's going to be inappropriate in another location. And particularly as it pertains to scale and mass.
No, no, I got you. Yeah, no. Okay, thank you, Daniel. I'm done. Thank you.
All right, Daniel, thank you for the presentation. Question, if. Obviously, this development isn't, you know, a canonical Santa Moss area development. When we've had this before, have we gotten, when someone has proposed saying that it's the objective standards but not the subjective architectural standards, have we gotten complaints in the past from the Santa Moss area Neighborhood Association or neighbors about that sort of thing? I realize we have one note from a neighbor here.
The stack has not been very active during COVID. We haven't received a lot of communication and correspondence over the last year.
Okay.
As it pertains to this.
Okay, I'm asking in general, it's like, to what extent we may be jumping in shadows here? That was.
I guess my question would be, follow up on that, is, is not just the last year, but over the last five years or so. I don't know how long you've been there, Daniel, but whether or not there's examples of where they, you know, were, you know, when, when, when we were accepted despite the Santa Moss area plan, where we allowed certain architectural things that may have not gone with the plan.
I mean, if a house was approved, the findings for approval, which include consistency with applicable guidelines, were satisfied. So anything that has been approved, by definition, has been found consistent, but either the planning commission or the director is consistent with the Santa Moss area neighborhood plan. Now, there are certainly areas where the understanding of what the plan means does evolve over time. And we are seeing introduction and more modern features. In years past, the commission has had discussions on the appropriateness of standing seam metal roofing, and whether or not that was an appropriate material in the Santa Moss area. We're starting to see some more modest, modern designs with more angular roof lines. And I mean, over time, that's starting to be seen, and the commission has read, interpreted the plan, is finding those projects consistent. So because it is a subjective plan, it's not necessarily a binary. It is an evolving document over time as it gets applied on a project-by-project basis, but that's what makes it subjective.
Daniel, can I ask a question about that objectivity versus subjectivity aspect of this discussion? So you mentioned the objectivity with the FAR and 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 I'm, I'd like to understand a little bit more the, I know that in the Santa Moss plan, it does specifically state minimizing the use of design elements that accentuate the perceived scale and mass, and they do specifically call out the use of turrets. So would you consider that a subjective or an objective?
Well, I think right there, the word minimize is subjective. What does that mean? How much is too much? I mean, a objective would be, do not allow, prohibit these features, or allow only a single turret, something that can be clearly read, black and white, where there is very little argument between people. And ideally, the standards in the future will be rewritten to reflect a more objective basis. And likely, that will also require creation of more standards than currently exist. For instance, this particular house has vertical walls, and the vertical walls do comply with the side setback requirements. Because in this particular case, the architect has designed it so that the, even though the ground floor wall could be closer to the property line, so you would have kind of a natural offset between first and second stories, they decide to just push the whole thing up against the most restrictive setback to have vertical walls. But in the future, the guideline or the standards could be written such a way that irrespective of the setbacks, that the second story has to have a certain relief offset from the first story of a certain amount of distance, say five feet. And so that even if you comply with the setbacks, as it does here, you would still need to provide that building articulation to help minimize the massing. For instance, also with the roofing, I mean, this home has a 612 pitch on the roof, which helps accentuate its height and size. We could come up with a standard that provides that if you have a two-story house, you need to have a 412 pitch to help minimize the height. There are a lot of standards like that, or another one, for instance, maybe a relationship between the first and second story, so that second story is now, you know, no larger than 50% than the size of the first story. Those are all types of standards that don't currently exist. In a lot of ways, through the years, the subjective design process has been trying to get to that, because we find ways to nip and tuck at a house to minimize its size. But it's very ad hoc and very much depends on what's being proposed and how the commission at any given time sees it. So in the future, by trying to create these standards that are more prescriptive and numeric, we'll get away from that, that style of planning.
So you're saying the fact that it says, "Design of homes should avoid long and articulated walls" is subjective, even though this house is all long and unarticulated walls?
Well, the word should is a subjective word as opposed to shall. And in the future, maybe we should say that a wall shall have a break of at least five feet every 50 linear feet or 20 linear feet. That's what the future will look like, so there won't be really any discussion on it. Here, should, and it allows for a wide variety of interpretation, which is why you do see homes that different people clearly disagree are consistent with the plan. I mean, not every home that's been approved in the past has had the majority vote by the commission, because individual commissioners may disagree with each other.
Thanks. I appreciate that, a very detailed response. Any other questions?
Well, one more question. On the FAR, is the FAR for Santa Moss different than the FAR for other areas in the city?
No, it's 45 throughout.
45 everywhere, okay.
So can you help me understand then, where does this, what kind of purview does the Planning Commission have here? Are we purely looking at whether or not this meets the objective standards? Given what you said about the subjective language in the Santa Moss area plan, or is there?
Sure. So the commission cannot deny the house, because any denial would be based on subjective standards. But the house can be approved, the permit can be approved, with conditions requiring certain design revisions. So for instance, if you felt that you do want that second story shrunken in size relative to the first story, or you do want the second story walls inset relative to the first story walls, and if you can articulate that in a way that we can write into a condition, you can do that. You can approve it that way. And then on the back end, as part of the building permits, middle, staff will effectuate those changes.
And can you help me understand what would be the basis of doing that, given the state guidelines?
Here, I can, I can weigh in a little bit. So, so a bit of an uncomfortable spot. So for, you know, my understanding, for years, there are, of course, design guidelines in this area which have applied, which is traditional in a community. Housing Accountability Act, as Daniel articulated, has become much more strict. And basically, you know, what the state is looking for is if a developer, someone walks in with any project that has units, and the, and the unit definition is, can be a house, an ADU, you can pick up the standards at the counter and know exactly what will apply. And so that's just a total paradigm shift, and a lot of communities like Campbell and others are trying to take those design guidelines and meet that standard. We're still in between, as Daniel mentioned, we're working on the standards. We anticipate probably the first wave of the objective standards will come to you in early 2022, but a lot of them might not come until we're done with the Housing and Urban General Plan, so just to sort of set expectations. So in this in-between, you know, what's the commission to do with subjective standards, right? That's, that's the big question. So we've, we worked closely, of course, with our city attorney, where's, what are the bookends on how you can look at this? So, so number one, if you take those design guidelines, which are not objective, you can apply them to this project, but there's three lines you can't cross. Number one, you can't use them to deny the project. Number two, you can't use them to the point where the project would just be fundamentally unfeasible. Where, you know, somehow that it was so affected in terms of its scope, design, you couldn't, the applicant couldn't build initially their intent, which is build a house and make you. And, and the third would be not to reduce intensity. So we worked closely with the city attorney to understand, what does that mean, intensity? Because some can interpret intensity to mean maybe the size of the house is smaller. But in getting guidance from the Housing Community Development and working with our attorney, intensity reduction really means if you were to reduce units. So for some reason, you were to go from two units to one unit. So what all that means is, is as Senior Planner Fama said, you can, you can use those standards today to apply conditions that might change the design. It could reduce the size of the house. That's, you know, you're well within the bookends to do that. But again, if the changes were so drastic that the project couldn't be built, the applicant came back and said, well, you know, it's of such a size, it's not economically feasible. Or in some way, it would be denied. You, those are conditions you couldn't apply. But you do have some free rein to a condition size massing that could even result in a reduction in square footage. So I hope that helps to give you some more bookends on how to apply those.
And if I can add, this is all also rooted in the fact that the commission in approving a permit needs to affirmatively establish the findings for approval. One is that the project is consistent with the applicable guidelines. So that's your, really, your legal nexus.
Got it. Thank you. Do we have a SARC report on this item?
Yes, Chair, and essentially per the the report, we had Commissioner Bookbinder and myself, we had divergent views on the proposal as, as described in the plans, not that we were against the house or even the design per se. It was the context and whether it should be, whether it's suitable for the San Tomas area is where we had different views, which we can, I guess, discuss in a few minutes.
Great. Appreciate that. Thank you. Alrighty. Okay, if we don't have any other questions for Daniel, I will open the public hearing, and would the applicant like to speak?
Yeah, thank you for that opportunity, Chair. Thanks to everyone for your time. I really appreciate your time on this. We have been spending almost more than a year and a half on this plan, so that's where I'm very passionate about this. It's my dream, dream house, right? So I shared my presentation, but I'll quickly go over that so that like everyone can see that. And I'll try to make it fast. So just to introduce ourselves, this is our family. We have been here in this house for five and a half years. In fact, we are the second owners of this house. My wife works as a middle school teacher in Cupertino School District, and I work for Amazon, and my kids go to the Campbell Schools. And I want to thank Vice Chair Ching for the SARC review, Bookbinder, and Daniel and Rob, they've been very helpful. So this is an old house built in 1953, and the previous owners, Hartman family, they lived their entire life in this house. And then we bought it. And then we bought it. So we are very inspired by their thing. They actually built this house and they lived through their life. And that's very inspirational for us, and we would like to do the same. So this is going to be for our home. So that's why we are considering all our considerations into putting, putting into this. So some of the considerations we, I called up here is like, we wanted to have some certain space for my office, prayer room, kids, art room and a space for exercise. We are also very concerned about the environment. So as Daniel mentioned, we could have gone a bigger size on the first floor, but we, we're going to be taking up a lot more, a lot size. And we want to conserve as much as the land as possible. So that was one of the reasons we are going a two-story house. And we also want to capture a maximum, the solar. And in fact, now solar is a must-have for any new house. And if we go by having, I think this is one of the session came up, he was like, hey, why don't we make the first floor bigger and the top floor smaller? See, obviously, it'll, it'll both violate my considerations here. We are like, I have to build a bigger on the lot. And also on the top, I'll have a lesser space for the solar. And obviously, there'll be shadows and it won't be the efficient of a solar. And structurally, we also want to go for the best possible thing. And that's where we went with maximum load-bearing walls and that kind of created the vertical design. And we tried, kind of tried to break it with different elements in the plan. And the round, the rounded feature was an ask for both of our kids. In fact, they designed this at with our architect and they were the ones who designed it. And we want to kind of consider that ask. And also having an ADU, that's important for us, for both my next, my brother, my mom. In fact, my brother is looking at moving to the Bay Area and unfortunately, we lost his wife for pandemic. And I want to support him. And that's a major, major decision for me on this plan. I will let Michelle speak through the remaining slides. Michelle?
Thank you for that overview. It sounds like your architect is here to speak as well.
Yeah. Michelle, are you able to speak?
Yes, I'm here.
I'll share the slides. You can talk through them, Michelle.
Okay. That sounds great. Okay. So I'm Michelle Minor, the designer on this project, and I also wanted to thank you for taking the time. This first slide here is, we talked about it as a two-story home that we're proposing. This lot has, being at the end of the court, has five, is a little bit market-trained, it has five sides, which makes the setbacks a little bit more difficult. We have a twenty-foot front, we have a twenty-foot on the side of the garage, and then the garage itself has to be twenty-five feet back with the rear also at twenty-five. And then the sides for the maximum with the upper floor needs to be twelve feet on both sides. So we did follow all of these setbacks, as we said. You can go to the next slide. So on this, we'll see that the red dot is our house there in Free to Court, and it is the primarily a single-story neighborhood, but the blue dots around show the two-story houses in our neighborhoods. This, you can see that this neighborhood is definitely transitioning to a two-story house. The yellow is multifamily, just for your condos and apartments, for your information. The chart shows that we have houses that range from a thousand square feet to fifty, seven hundred square feet in this neighborhood with a maximum floor area for living only. I don't have the information for garages to be accurate, so we didn't put it on here. Living only at twenty-eight percent to forty-four percent. Ours for the living only without the ADU is thirty-five percent and with the ADU is thirty-three percent. If you kind of look at with garages, which vary, two, three-car garages in Rodnick, a lot of them, and one car in the court behind us, then it would raise the eighty, the percentages up to, you know, somewhere in the forty to forty-nine percent in this area. So it's pretty, our, our project is consistent with the neighborhood. And as it stated, that an ADU can go above the FAR up to eight hundred square feet. We are taking seven hundred of that. The L-shaped house, I believe, while it is, as you stated, has some bulk and mass with the vertical walls. The L makes the house, the bulk of the house recede from the property line. Those two front corners that you see, one balcony is at twenty, twenty feet, as May have said, twenty-five, twenty feet. And the other corner of the patio is at twenty feet. But the bulk of the house back there, that, that stuccoed round wall is at thirty-five feet. So it really does take the house away from the street. We did break up the house with the, the horizontal roof banding that goes around. And then go to the next slide, please. This is the, a new rendering that I did to incorporate the landscaper's plan, so you can kind of see that that does help soften. And we do have a lot of trees around the property for privacy. Next slide. We do feel like that our design fits into what has recently been approved. This is a neighborhood, a home in the Santa Mas area. And it shows the modern home, vertical walls, different materials, as we did. Next slide.
Yeah, one thing I want to add, all the examples we put here are San Tomas.
They are, they are all Santa Mas area.
And in fact, they are within blocks of our house, maybe within half a mile kind of radius.
This slide is across, this one is across the street from a previous slide. You'll see the two-story vertical walls and the second, the bottom side has no breakup in the banding. That is the picture I took from the center of the court. And the other one also only just has a belly band. Next slide. This is a project that was approved last year where this one is a two-story home next to a single-story home, and it was approved at fifty-two percent. Next slide, please.
In fact, this one also has a same scaling issue. The neighboring homes are one-story old houses. But it was approved.
That's right. Uh, next slide. These are just examples of things that have been approved, that various, those have the rounded.
Yeah, I want to add one more thing on this slide particularly. So one thing, we are not going with turrets. We are going with the curved wall. We don't have the cone-shaped top. And another thing I also want to add is like, I see the stand guideline was actually amended in two thousand. That was the last amendment done. And this housing was actually built in twenty, two thousand and two. So this was post-stand guideline.
Okay. Just, these are just more examples. Go ahead and keep going. That is the one you guys talked about. And then the next slides we have are just letters, I think you guys have seen these, but they are letters from the neighbors who are happy with the project. These are the Free to Court neighbors are happy with the project that we are doing.
Yeah, in fact, Drake is my neighbor on the left side. And then the next one, Subissue, is the neighbor on my right side. And these emails were not sent now, but maybe a month back before the SARC meeting, actually. And we have Walt. Unfortunately, Walt is also on the call today. Yeah, that's all we have to present to. Any questions to us?
Any questions for the applicant?
Yeah, I was gonna ask if on, on the examples you show, like Meadows Court and Lawrence Hill, do you know the, the construction dates on those?
Between two thousand and fourteen?
This one is actually pretty new. It was built in two thousand and twenty, last year.
Oh, okay.
And, and these houses were also new. These were built around twenty eighteen.
I believe I looked up.
These are twenty eighteen, somewhere around twenty eighteen.
Okay, some of them, some in that part were two thousand and fourteen to two thousand and nineteen. So since the design guidelines had gone into play.
Yeah, this is pretty new. It was just the last year.
Yeah, and it was just, it's up for sale right now. They just finished it.
Thank you.
I don't have any, I don't have any specific questions, but I'd like to thank the applicant for a very thorough presentation.
Tara Strasky, if I could actually just pause for one moment. So I'm actually being told, I'm confirmed, Ryan, if you can check, I don't see us streaming on YouTube right now. Says that's streaming, but it's not live on the actual city's YouTube channel. Just want to make sure we're actually at least recording before the commission engages in their discussion.
Yes, and also streaming.
Okay. Yeah, because going to the YouTube app, I'm not seeing it, and neither is Steven nor my wife. So.
For what it's worth, I'm pretty sure the last meeting didn't stream on YouTube. I did try to look, but.
As long as it's being recorded, since we want to at least have a visual record of the meeting.
Well, I may just want to confirm here, for a member of the public, they all received a link to participate in this meeting via Zoom if they needed to. So if that's the case, I'm, I'm pretty sure.
This is a real B and H customer story. Check it.
Okay.
Checking YouTube.
I was seeing if it worked, but I couldn't find it working.
Okay, so Commissioner or Director Eastwood, are you comfortable proceeding?
I, yeah, so my, if, again, if it was noticed, any member of the public can click on the link and tend to watch the meeting. And that meets the standard for you to continue, but looking to the attorney to see anything to add to that.
Right, as long as there is a way for the public to view it and participate, we should be fine.
Great. Thank you, Bill.
Okay, so Zoom is, fulfills the requirement then.
Bill, I'd like to point out that it should is a subjective word, word. I'm just kidding. Sorry, guys. Go ahead, go ahead.
All right. And Tara Strasky, before we move on, I just wanted to make a couple clarification points from the applicant's presentation. So the Santa Mas area neighborhood plan was adopted in nineteen ninety-three and amended in two thousand. So it's been in effect for quite a long time. And just again, for context, the Meadows Court and the Lawrence Hill projects, I mean, those were cul-de-sac projects. So all the homes were their own neighbors. So it was a very cohesive development, very different than just dropping a house within an existing established neighborhood.
And when was the the, the area with the turrets? When was that built, Daniel?
That, I don't worry. I believe the applicant, she indicated that it was early two thousands, which I begin, don't really have those, that record on hand.
What was the, what was the address there for the, that the applicant provided?
You're going to have to look at our presentation.
One, twelve oh eight Capri Drive. It's on the corner of the hacienda and Capri Drive. And one more thing I also want to add to Daniel, the Meadow Court House and the Lawrence Hill Court, they are courts, but they come through Abbott Avenue, and those Abbott Avenue has polar homes.
Okay, thank you very much. I appreciate your presentation and as well as from the architect. So at this point, I'd like to open it up to the public, open the public hearing and ask if anybody from the public would like to speak on this item. I see a couple hands, so we'll start with Roxanne Dubois. Welcome.
I need to speak now.
Hi, thank you. Yeah, just for one point of clarification, I received a letter in the mail letting me know about this meeting. And with a letter, you can't click on the link, but it had a very long, mile-long address. So I typed in every single character, but then it required a password. And so it was non-functional for the public to participate. Luckily, I called and I got someone at your office and they sent me a direct link, but your system's really not working to include the public. I got kind of lucky that I got to participate. It's not really just the system that's working. So I've been in the neighborhood since nineteen ninety-seven. I've been on Robinet Court since two thousand and twelve. And I think it's exactly like somebody said, like, there's certain streets and cul-de-sacs that are like newer and maybe more modern, or they have a different style, like the castle houses, as they're referred to. And I think that is really different than putting a monster house in the middle of a rural area. I live on an area where a lot of the sidewalk, we don't even have sidewalks everywhere. There's, you know, like the, kind of the dirt, and I'm not complaining about it. It was hard when I pushed a stroller, but like, it's really nice, you know, there's lots of parrot, wild parrots, and it has a nice rural feel to it, and I like that. From Robinet Court, what I'm concerned about is right now, when I look out in that direction, I see a beautiful sunset. And the sun sets into the trees and it's very nice. And I think that if this is approved as is, what I'm going to see is a gigantic wall on the back of the monster house that I believe is twelve feet from the fence, which doesn't even give space for him to plant trees. The drawing is wrong because it shows there's more trees on this side of the fence than there actually are. And I really wish that he was, the builder was required, like in other cities like Los Gatos, to put up the two-by-four framing to show what a monster it's going to look like. You know, I really think that would give you guys a visual to see what you're going to leave me with. So I'm just kind of disappointed. I wasn't given an opportunity to do a presentation because I would have probably gone around and taken pictures of cul-de-sacs with rural, you know, houses and maybe the, the big thumb gigantic house right in the middle and kind of tried to portray like what I'm thinking of, or maybe, you know, when the backside of a house, you know, it's going to be beautiful, I'm free to court, but I just don't know anybody took into respect, you know, what it looks like from my side. And I'm also unclear if, it's a minor point, but they, I keep hearing there's two porches. Like I sit on my porch and I look at the sunset. I know one of their porches faces the street, but I don't know if the other one faces my side. Or if I just have a straight wall, like, I don't know where the second porch is, kind of doesn't matter, but it, it doesn't feel like I was given a real opportunity to participate because the link doesn't work. I wasn't given an opportunity to do a presentation of equal length. And I just, you know, I really never, nobody, a lot of people don't like the castle houses. So I think maybe we should get some opinions and thoughts on the castle houses. There's one house at the corner of Harriet and hacienda. They've had a devil of a time selling it because it kind of looks weird. And if you drive by now, they're like gutting the whole thing and spending hundreds of thousands of dollars trying to get rid of the strange look about it. You know, sometimes people just want like a regular house that looks like a house and not having kids designing castles. So anyway, those are my comments.
Thank you. Our next speaker is Dee Robinson. And Corinne, do we need to, do we need to ask for the name and address of the speakers for the record? I know we recently changed how we were doing the.
Attorney, I don't think it's necessary. We'll just put their name on there.
Okay, thanks.
I'm, I'm clicking it to allow to talk, but I'm not, I don't know if that person is still here.
I'm here. Can you hear me?
Yes.
Yeah, okay, thank you. I'm also on Robinet Court. My name's Doug Robinson. I, I want to be a good neighbor and I understand the excitement of, of, you know, doing a remodel on the house. The things I'm concerned about are the, you know, on that court, there are, I think, six houses and all of them are one-story. So to put such a large house with the vertical walls with no inset is going to seem very large on that street. And I imagine, you know, the day may come where they'll transition, but in general, most of the homes that have been built in this area have been kind of a craftsman style, I would, I would describe them as, more than something else. And just the, the height of it, I think, is going to really stand out, especially from our, our court. I think it's going to seem very large. So if they, a lot of the things that you guys were talking about, let's say, shall instead of must, it seems like a lot of them should, or I mean, may instead of shall or whatever, that it should probably turn into shall because the, the the vertical wall, I, I, I have seen it a few times, but I've seen it in neighborhoods where the, like, the entire neighborhood is that way, not where it's unique to that neighborhood. where the, like the entire neighborhood is that way, not where it's unique to that neighborhood. The vertical wall seems like it will be very imposing is the way I would, I would think of it. So if, I don't know, that's, that's would be a concern for me. In addition to the tree idea that trees could be planted in a way to, to shield it a bit. But like I said, we want to be good neighbors, so that's all.
Thank you for your comments and for taking the time to be here. Our next speaker is Elaine Terzigny.
I think it's Terzini.
Terzini, thank you. Elaine.
Nope, it's Walt, can you hear me okay?
Hi Walt, sure can.
My name's Walt Terzini, I live about five houses away from the prospective building site. And my family's lived in Campbell for over sixty years. I currently live in the property that was built to meet by my family and I built a home here in Campbell because this is where I wanted to live. This is a neighborhood that I grew up in when I was a child. And many of the homes have gone through a transformation. When I was a child, there was a lot of homes that were twelve and thirteen hundred square feet. They're very small because it was an orchard area. There's no, there were no street, there are very few lights. But over the last ten or fifteen years, the whole city's gone through a metamorphosis. And actually, as a child, when I was sixteen, I worked for the city of Campbell and this Public Works Department as an intern. So I really loved the city. But one of the things that we're finding in the neighborhoods is people, as they transcend to the neighborhoods, the ability to, to develop your property is really critical to take advantage of the opportunity to make the best you can, to take the, the opportunity to design your own dream home. And I was able to do that about nine years ago, when I basically built my home here in Campbell. And I built the home that I wanted to build and I'm very thankful the city of Campbell worked with me and enabled me to do that. And as we see that the families coming in and growing, we see people wanting to invest in their homes and we're hoping that those investments enable us to improve the neighborhoods, increase the property values and hopefully we have a great neighborhood for decades to come. So I really support the design and development that this property owner is going through. I went through something similar to it, you know, eight or nine years ago, where, you know, you're investing a lot of money and you want to make sure that it's your forever home, you don't plan on leaving. And I love Campbell, I decided to just make this my family home forever. And it's, hopefully will stay in my family for many decades. But it all had to start with that I had to take the home that I had here before that was over seventy years old and I had to take it down. Because it was eight, too old, it was very dilapidated, it needed to be updated and it couldn't support my family. So with the help of the city of Campbell, they enabled me to build the home I wanted to build and I hope that you'll take favoritism onto this, onto this property owner to build his dream home and work with them to, to grow, grow his family in Campbell, that's what we want. We want people to go and invest in their properties and build in the properties and stay here and, and not move on or not turn them into rent. So my comments today are only for support for the property owner and I hope that you give him favorable direction in the future and I hope to have his home in the neighborhood. So thank you very much for allowing me to speak.
Thank you very much. Our next speaker is Ms. Hardaway.
Have you, can you hear me now?
Yes.
Okay, so my name is Melissa Hardaway and I am at thirteen ninety-five Robnik Court, which is the adjacent property on the Robnik side, on the left side of, of the property in question. I, like Roxanne and Doug, my neighbors have articulated, there is, I, I do have some concern about what the backside, what essentially is the backside of the house going to look like? Because that's what I will see from my property. I am happy to have trees planted along the property line, so long as they don't interfere with the trees I have on my side of the fence. You know, I, I do have a few big trees and it is important that they not be too crowded because that's not good for the health of the trees. So I do want to make sure that there's going to be some balance between, you know, the, the view and the landscaping and what is going to be healthy for the, the surrounding properties. My neighbor across the street, who may or may not be on this as well, also has a lot of trees on, on her property. And likewise, I advocate for the health of her, her landscaping and her property, her trees on her property as well. But the main thing that I would like some assurances on is that, to the extent that there is visibility of the backside of the house, I know the backside of my house is not as pretty as the front side of my house. Is there going to be some design? Design there that will be pleasant to, to look at, to the extent that it can't be screened by trees?
And can you repeat your address, please?
My address is thirteen ninety-five Robnik Court. It's the, the last one on, in the cul-de-sac that has that little panhandle of property.
Got it. Great, thank you. Okay, it looks like we do not have any other members of the public who'd like to speak from what I can tell. I'm sorry, Corinne, can you repeat that?
Nobody waiting in the, in the waiting room, nobody else waiting.
Okay, perfect, thanks for confirming that. So with that, I'll close the public hearing and ask the commissioners to discuss who would like to get us started.
Also, could I, I have, I had, can turn my three D around and show that if you guys would like?
And. I think we're going to ask the commission to, to speak because we've closed the public hearing, thank you.
You got it, okay.
Sure, should I start off?
I was just going to ask you to start, thank you Vice Chair Cheng. Certainly, please, especially because you're on the SART committee, I think that's a great way to get us going.
Yeah, sure. So, you know, in, in terms of the house, you know, I, I think the house design is quite nice. I don't have the objection to a house or the size or anything like that, it's just the context and where it's being placed. And in conjunction with the San Thomas area plan, and I know, I know the neighborhood pretty well, so I go running around the neighborhoods. So I think some of the, the comments from the member, members of the public type to sum up a, a lot of the spirit of the development there, both, both the older developments and some of the new development. I've been on, I guess, the planning commission for about four years now. And although I can't pinpoint it, I do remember some quite vocal meetings where members of the community have raised concerns over buildings which are not sort of fitting the intent and the guidelines of the San Thomas area plan. And I, I do, I do accept that you can't have things stuck in a, in a time bubble, right? Things need to evolve. And I think we've seen that with some of the new developments in the San Thomas area where we've had some very nice contemporary designs coming in there. But also type of reflect the spirit of the, the San Thomas area. So it's, it's not just a completely different idea, it is a more modern interpretation of it. I, I, I think with this, and this is where I struggle with this particular development. I, I can't see any aspects of the design type of keeping with the San Thomas area. And it's much more revolutionary than even evolutionary in, in, in that plan. And what would worry me is if we were to support this as proposed, I'm not sure the, the San Thomas area plan has any relevance anymore. I, I think it's basically putting the guidelines through the shredder because you could put that house anywhere. I, it is completely, I, I don't think it's really particularly sensitive to, to the plan at all. However, saying that, I think some changes to the design could be made, that doesn't make it unfeasible, maybe make it slightly more modest for the, for the owner, but still keep with the intensity, keep with the feasibility of it, but also be more sensitive to the San Thomas area and some of the concerns of the neighbors that have been expressed tonight. So that, that's my, my thought, you know, I'd love to see this house development go ahead. I'd love to see the owners get something really, really special. You know, I, I read, I read, would like to see that, but I think we could work on some changes here which enable a lot of what they want, but also more sensitive to the, the San Thomas neighborhood. Thank you.
Thank you, Commissioner Cheng.
I'd be happy to go next. So. My notes on this are, I, I can, I really appreciate that a lot of neighbors care in, in both directions, especially that, that people came out both to say that they want the owner to be able to change to, to modernize their dwelling and other people who are understandably worried about that. I, I looked it up seventy years ago, this county had less than three hundred thousand people in it, now has just shy of two million. It's a very different place. And I can understand that when you've been here for a long time, it's not even so much that you don't want anything to change, it's that you want to be extremely careful about change because you've really, you know, planted your flag here. Another note, looking at thirteen ninety-five Robnik, I believe it was, yes. The house in question is directly northwest of that. I'm not sure how it would obscure the sunset yet. At its northernmost point, the sun sets at two hundred eighty-six degrees, which is a little bit slightly north of due west. I, I don't think that's going to obscure it. More broadly, I'm, this may be somewhat obvious, but I'm generally of the opinion that our job should be less to subjectively comment on individual projects. Like, I, I think that these things should be as predictable and objective as possible. And I get the sense that the state is kind of pushing us in this direction as well. Notice that the applicant is a, a year and a half in, which, wow. And I also hope that we can do better on the public comment thing. It's very good to be hearing from the public and we will certainly be hearing more from the public. I encourage everybody who has weighed in here to come back at our, our next meeting to, where we'll be talking about the general plan, which certainly affects everybody's neighborhood. But more directly, I, I would have to have a really good reason to turn down awesome things and the turret, or not exactly turret, but the, the circular column is really awesome. It, it's similar to some other, I, some other projects in the neighborhood. I, I like the project, I understand that it's not exactly the same, but it does fit in with the shape of the neighborhood. And more broadly, I think in practice, the neighborhood is generally changing. You used to have small, I think as was pointed out by one of our commenters, twelve hundred, thirteen hundred square foot dwellings without ADUs and we're moving towards larger dwellings with built-in ADUs that are generally two stories instead of one. And that's kind of gradually changing all over the neighborhood. And I see this as being part of that. So I, I am in a position of I would support the development. Those are my thoughts.
Thank you, Commissioner Bookbinder.
Commissioner Colville's raising his hand.
Oh, thank you, I, please, Mr. Colville.
I, I like the hand raising feature, it's like the old microphone with the red button.
Yeah, that's right, the old school, back in the old pre-COVID days, huh?
We'll, we'll, we'll get back there. This, uh.
Make sure you said and shall properly now.
Yes, I, I will, otherwise the attorney will get me. This, this one here, I went out and took a look at the, the area and to me, I find this one actually quite simple, quite straightforward. You know, for the people who want to get straight to the point, I, I'm going to echo what Bookbinder said and I support the project fully. And the reasons being, I, I actually went and checked out the areas, both Freida Court and Robnik Court. And I was, I was genuinely perplexed as to what the concerns were regarding monster housing. When you drive through Robnik Court, everything, the, the very wide street, huge lots and, and everything's two-story, a lot of three-car garages, huge homes, very big homes. I was expecting to go into that neighborhood, given the complaint that we had and the, the email detailing the concerns. I expected to go in there to find a much more rural setting than I did. I found a lot of large houses on Robnik, they were all huge two stories. And the view being obstructed, interestingly or ironically, I guess the biggest concern about that view being obstructed by a new house is that, that's the only small space that's left where there is a view because you are surrounded by all these other huge two-story homes. And if there was a concern about obstruction of view, my concern would first be pointed at that massive property with the huge trees and the, the completely encroaching dead foliage and plants that's directly to the west on Robnik Court, very, very large property. And that, that to me, I, I was trying to check out what in the world was going on there in the first place. And so you could tell when you drive through that court that there is only one little area where there's view over that fence and that's because everything else is huge, two-story homes, big lots and big houses. And to me, that, that, that would mean this new home would fit right in. I find it a great utilization of space, I find the two-story design beautiful in its own regard. I'm not designing it and it's not my home to live in. So it's hard for me to subjectively say, well, I think that's beautiful and that's not beautiful. I think the example they gave on Meadow Court is a great example, I saw that a house court for sale and I said, wow, beautiful, new, modern, looks big, awesome. That's too subjective, we always argue with that. So that's for the homeowner to really, to deal with. But the utilization of space itself, they are in the R one-nine area. And this is exactly why you buy a home with a big lot, because you want to be able to capitalize on it. If you redevelop, just like the gentleman spoke in the public hearing about his family being here for sixty-plus years, that's what you do, you, you tear down and you, you rebuild something. Now, all the setbacks, I was expecting also to see more setbacks violated, more restrictions to be violated in terms of the overall size. And I was surprised to not see that. Everything was pretty much complied with except the FAR. And that was even because of the ADU and we want to see ADUs moving forward. So it's a great construction that utilizes space to build an eighty ADU. Overall, the project in its scope seems to, to fit the bill when we remove the subjective standards, especially because it adheres to the code almost entirely. And again, I just found the discussion points about the block view and it being a monster home in comparison to everything else being two-story on Robnik. That's a tough one for me to digest. Now, the public comment, gentleman mentioned the fact that maybe we're going in the direction of two-story homes, but Freida Court is full of one-story homes still. And unless we see that all sold to a developer who then turns it into a planned development and builds all brand-new two-story homes at the same time, we don't see a neighborhood transform overnight. We see one house built with a new design and a second story and then other homes follow suit as new people move into the area. I find it a great use of space, I support the project entirely and I'll be planning to make a motion after we have our discussion to see what happens. Thank you, guys.
Thanks, Commissioner Colville. All right, Commissioners, this are, I see a hand up.
Thank you. First of all, I just want to thank the owner and the architect as well as the, the local residents for being here and giving their position. I also, I also visited the site twice, actually, both on Freida and on Robnik. And actually, Commissioner Colville, I had a whole lot of things I was going to say, but between Commissioner Colville and a couple others and, and the owner's presentation, it's covered most of what I was going to bring up. So I was the, 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 the Robnik Court Street, which is made up of homes that are between thirty-five hundred square feet and even five thousand square. which is made up of homes that are between thirty five hundred square feet and even five thousand square feet, is actually almost fully sidewalk. So I'm not quite sure, I don't want to offend Mr. Bla, but the entire street is fully sidewalked, except for that last section where there's a grove of trees. There's a small home inside that grove of trees, I found out. So so to me, that's not, I I, you know, this whole thing with the rural country feel is not there, really. They even have modern light poles on the on the street. And it looks like an upscale suburban area. So and if you look at, as as the owner put, he also showed some other streets, I actually went over to Van Dusen Lane, which is an adjacent street, and they have large thirty five hundred to five thousand square foot homes, except at the very end where it becomes kind of country. But what what struck me initially when I saw this was the fact that this was going to be a big house on a small cul-de-sac where the other house, the other houses haven't been our our more original small homes. And so that that struck me as well. This is out of place. But once I looked at the entire neighborhood, and actually, I'm familiar with the Santa Mas area. I moved to Santa Mas area, I don't live there anymore, but in nineteen seventy nine, when it was mostly fifteen hundred square foot houses on oversized lots and had a a kind of a semi rural feel to it with no sidewalks on most of the streets. Today, it's not so much. There's a, there's a lot of streets with no sidewalks, but there's a lot of streets with sidewalks. And there's a lot of, because of all the developments occurred in the last thirty to forty years. So I'm, I'm, you know, the concern I had was the big, big house on the one, one big house on the block. But, you know, a- as Commissioner Colville says, it's like somebody's got to do the first one. So and that most likely there will be others coming on that particular street. Plus, the fact that there are three residents of that street that have spoken up in favor of it, that kind of helped me get over that hump. So I, as far as the the look of the house, I I'm not a big house fan, but that's just my personal thing. But it fits the lot, especially with, you know, with the ADU, it fits the lot. I don't consider the, you know, the thing with the turrets. It's like, I I don't consider that a turret. It's a, it's a, it's a, it's a, it's a rounded, it's a rounded wall. There's no conical top to it. It's just a little bit, and there's another rounded area. I kind of like stuff with it that's rounded sometimes. So I don't have a problem with the design. And it meets the specifications. As far as the other thing, Commissioner Colville talked about the view, and I I'm agreeing with it. I actually went to the end of the block and looked at that view. And there's a narrow space there. And and I think though, I imagine that they'll see the mostly the second story of the ADU from from that position on the end of the the cul-de-sac. And that may have some kind of negative feel to it, I suppose. But, you know, there is place to build, to, there's a place on the cul-de-sac where there are trees planted at the end of the cul-de-sac. And the two myrtle trees are kind of, you know, scrawny. But those those two myrtle trees could be replaced with something more significant on on their own cul-de-sac. So that might be something that somebody might want to think about getting approval for that to. And I I don't think the last house, I think it was Melissa who spoke up, who lives in the last house. I don't think the property encroaches on her, her property in terms of the trees. I don't, it's, 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 I think, as Commissioner Bookbinder said, it's, it's, it's south, it's, it's south of there. So I I don't think that that's going to be an issue with regards to planting trees that would encroach on her trees. So I don't see that as a problem. So I I'm, I'm in favor of it, despite the fact that it's kind of the biggest, going to be the biggest house in that particular block. But I I I would foresee more large houses coming into that in the, in the, in the coming years. So I would be in favor of it. Thank you.
Alrighty, thank you. Commissioner Riblin, you're up next.
Yes, I I don't have too much to add from what's already been shared. I I will, you know, I was reading the packet and let me just find the comment. I'll recite it for everyone. Sorry, just a moment, lost my clicking. Findings for approval, option B, the project will aid in the harmonious development of the muted area. I'm not sure that it will aid in the harmonious development, but that being subjective, I don't think that qualifies for, and and obviously, based on feedback from senior planner Fama, we, you know, that can't reject the project. I I will say, I don't live there anymore, but when I first moved to Campbell, I lived a block over on Harriet, Harriet and Walters. And I was in the smallest, tiniest little farmhouse built in the late fifties. And immediately behind me was what I would consider as part of this conversation, a mega home. There was a large, very large two story home that was right up against fence line, probably violates some version of setback when it was built. Never really studied that. But I I don't think this goes to that extreme, but it will be a larger house up against smaller homes. But I did live there, and it didn't, you know, I guess it really is down to the neighbor. You have a neighbor with a small home who makes a lot of noise and causes problems, or a neighbor in a large home who does the same. Or you could have a neighbor in a large home who does, you know, is is a great neighbor who looks after his community. You know, I welcome, I I assume you live here already to the applicant. I look forward to, you know, it seems like there'll be a welcome addition with your new home. I I do support it in the sense that it meets everything except the FAR. And I I don't think it's significant enough to, you know, override in the community, given that there are some other larger homes that are at that threshold as well. So with that, I, like I said, everyone else has already touched on it. I think it'll be a nice home for you, you know, sans any conical turrets. So I don't think, I mean, so, yeah. Yeah, those are my thoughts.
Thank you. Okay. I think we've heard from everybody.
I better dial, check, I'll chime in.
Oh, yeah.
I have my hand up, but I'm not on your screen.
I missed that. Apologies.
No, you know, I, yeah, yeah. And I think we, these were all really good comments from it. What a, what a good issue this is, and good comments from commissioners and from the neighbors and from the applicant. And, you know, I think it could be a win win here. I guess the thing that I was wrestling with really from from day one and and, you know, for the ten minutes before our meeting, I was going through the stamp plan again. You know, I'm reading it again. And I, I, and I'm no designer, I don't, I'm just the average guy in the street. But, you know, when I look at the design, there's no question in my mind that it does not fit the stamp plan. I mean, it's, it's, it's not fitting. I know it makes all the objective standards, and and I think with the ADUs, which we want. So we do have the the bigger project, and maybe it, it actually does, with the ADU, it actually does fit the FAR. So it's, it makes all the standards. And I, and I guess, you know, my my subjective opinions of why it doesn't agree with stamp wouldn't really help the neighbors on Robnik too much. But I don't think it would hurt the applicant either. I think they can still have the dream house. And really, and I know, you know, it's changing, we're, we're getting a lot of these, I hate to say turrets, it's not really a turret. But in my, in my little neighborhood, we got all the houses that are redesigning. There's a lot of turret type circular designs. But that's not, that's not currently the, you know, the subjective stamp plan. I know we're trying to get to the objective standards. But as it, as we're sitting here right now, it really does not meet that plan. And I know we got to change the plan, and the plan might be out of date, and we're getting more modern, and things are happening. But I think with with relatively, in my opinion, my layman's opinion, relatively minor design changes, you could still have a dream house there that would be a a little more in keeping with the Santa Mas neighborhood plan. And I I think it's the circular stuff, it's that, it's that conical roof, it's the vertical windows. I think the second story can be short, you know, small, less square footage. Relatively minor. I mean, I think the general design of the house is good, and it would would work well. That street is obviously going to be, you know, redeveloped as we go on, and things will be changing. But, you know, that's just my two cents. I appreciate everybody's comments, but, yeah, that's where I was just kind of way on the subjective part versus the objective part, and why it gets so tricky, such a tough issue. Thanks.
Great, thank you very much.
I'd like to move and make a motion unless anybody else wants to speak on it.
Well, that just leaves me.
Oh. Well, you know.
See, so, yeah, thanks, everybody, for for all of your thoughts on this. I I pretty much agree with most of the comments that were made. I did want to point out one thing that applicant said that I appreciated and that hasn't been mentioned yet, and that's the, the idea of, you know, kind of maximizing or maximizing the, the the ground, the space, the natural space, which is, you know, a trade off and something you can do when you do build two stories. And then the other point was the maximizing the solar space for providing more solar and energy efficiency. So, you know, tho- those are two good points that two, two good points for having a higher, a wider second story. And I think, you know, with all the concern around the environmental impacts, I I do appreciate that. It is a bit contrary to the spirit of the Santa Mas plan. But as what, as has already been stated, we do need to evolve, given what's happening. And the objective standards have been met. And and I do look forward to working on the subjective standard, standards and making those more objective. So those are my comments. Please proceed, Commissioner Colville.
Uh, Commissioner. I see. First, Mr. Marali, the the public hearing is closed. So unfortunately, the members of the public cannot speak right now. I do apologize for that. And Cheng, you had your hand up, please go.
Yeah, and similar to, I think, Commissioner Cray, I think I've been some really good comments, and it's not an easy one. And this is more of a, probably a general comment, and maybe something we need to be taking into the general plan review. You know, my my gauge from the the feedback from my fellow commissioners are in favor of it. I I would say it now questions the relevance of the Stan, the San Thomas area plan. Because I I think as Commissioner Cray says, it's pretty much clearly out of keeping with what the plan says. So you have to question, is the plan relevant anymore? Right, maybe, maybe not. But I think it's a, a fault, is a, you know, a fallacy to have a plan and then not to consider it, right? And that might mean the plan isn't relevant, and we should dispose of the plan. But I think that's a conversation that we should be thinking about. Because if we don't take plans into consideration when we comment and and do recommendations, it doesn't stop at this plan, right? What's the next one? Should we then disregard the general plan or or other features? So I think this is something we should be thinking about as as we look at the general plan and and other developments. That's all I really wanted to say.
I think, I think those are valid points as well, Commissioner. And I I agree with them and echo the sentiment. And and I think our planning department has done a great job of helping us understand and the public understand that that is exactly why we are moving toward the more objective standards, because it gets so touchy and so difficult to handle. It's, it's, it's a toss up, and it makes it difficult. I do want to touch on something with the attorney before I make a motion. And the question is regarding the the heckling that's happening in the Q and A section. If we had somebody in a a live meeting that continued to heckle commissioners as they spoke in real time, would we be able to remove them? And can we apply that to hecklers who are continuing to attack commissioners as we comment on the the subject matter? And it seems like they're, they're getting pretty, pretty brute with some of the the implications of what they're inferring. But the question to the city attorney.
Yes, and I I think you're, we're dealing with an area where technology has gotten ahead of the law, which is almost always the case. I would say this, yes, you're right. If if somebody was continuing to communicate in a regular meeting, you would be able to to tell them that, no, it's not appropriate. You, you've had your opportunity to speak. I would, however, think, given that we do not have any rules presently against, specifically against electronic communications during the meeting, I would suggest that you take those communications into consideration in your decision.
Thank you, Bill. I appreciate it. I'd like to make a motion. This is going to require a second, of course. So I make a motion to adopt resolution PLN dash twenty twenty one dash thirty one, approving a site and architecture review permit to allow construction of an approximately forty four seventy five square foot two story, single family dwelling, finding the project categorically exempt under section fifteen three oh three of the California Environmental Quality Act. And I do want to confirm that, this is going to confirm that we find the findings for approval to be in line with what is needed in both A, B, and C. That means the project will be consistent with the general plan. This be the project will aid in the harmonious development of the immediate area. And and see that the project is consistent with applicable adopted design guidelines.
Do we have a second?
I'll second.
Who's that, please?
Me, Bookbinder.
All right, Corinne, can we have a a roll call?
Alphabetical order, Commissioners Bookbinder. Colville.
Hi.
Ray.
No.
Riblin.
Sorry, I also voted no.
Zisser?
Aye.
Vice Chair Cheng?
No.
And Chair Ostrowski?
Aye.
It's a four three. In favor?
Thank you. So that the planning commission action is final unless appealed in writing to the city clerk within ten calendar days. All right, that concludes our item on the planning commission tonight. So Director Eastwood, do we have anything to, do you have anything to report to the commission this evening?
Yeah, Chair Scruggs, I'll try and keep it short. Again, that's why, of course, commissions have odd numbers. Congratulations on getting through your deliberations to a vote either way. Two things, one is, I will work with the attorney. It is a bit odd, we have the Q and A on. I'm, I'm actually going to see if we can turn that off. It'd be the equivalent of sitting in the council chambers and you somehow gain messages during the meeting, which does not happen. So we're going to take a look at that. That's, that is abnormal. Two, we'll take a look at the noticing. I I know that came up. We want to make it a bit simpler, make sure people can get access to this meeting in the most simple way. So so just two follow ups from this meeting. Three, happy report, last Tuesday, just two actions from the council. One, if you'll remember that mixed use project, project on Winchester, it was two five seven five Winchester, fifteen units with ground floor commercial that was approved by the council. Not much deliberation, general encouragement from the council for the project. So good news, wanted to pass that on. Two, the council approved a contract with two consultants to support finishing the general plan and the housing element. And so that will continue to move that forward. And my last announcement, just continue to circle that next date, September fourteenth. We do plan on having a study session with yourselves to go through the general plan. Not sure if it makes sense to start a little earlier, your discretion. We can, we can, I know you all have jobs, but sometimes the study sessions can go longer. But again, we want to reserve that date just for you to review the general plan, provide feedback. We're going to give you the public comment that the council looked at. We're going to circle kind of some big items that the council identified and staff identified. We're gonna circle, uh, kind of some big items that the council identified and staff identified, so at least you know those. But again, we want to spend the, the, pretty much the entirety of that evening, uh, highlighting, uh, the general plan and, and gaining your input on that. And so with that, I will close up and, of course, I'm available for any questions, if you have any.
Great, thank you. Um, I'll just weigh in. I would be in support of starting that particular meeting earlier than seven-thirty.
Likewise, I could do an hour, half or six.
I second that.
I fourth.
Okay. Are we just not, uh, expecting to have SARC that week?
Uh, we'll take a look. Yeah, I think we can adjust, uh, one way or another. We still got three weeks to notice if we need to move SARC or do something else. You know, highest priority, I think, in our mind is just to carve out enough time for you to, to, to focus on the general plan. So we'll work, uh, Corinne, uh, we'll work, work with you on just scheduling. And sounds like the sentiments are to start later, so we'll, we'll, uh, we'll focus on doing that.
We, we shall start earlier. Now, we should.
Can I just say one thing about the, uh, uh, access to the Zoom meeting? You know, the, the agenda, which is public, has, has the link in the PDF. Oh, um, the, the question isn't that there's not an available link. It's the question is like, how, how people get to know the meeting? And I, I think somebody who, who is, who's, who is inquiring probably should be, uh, sent a link to the agenda so that, uh, because it's right there. It's right there at the top of the agenda is the Zoom link for the public. So, yeah, seems to me it's available.
Yeah, my only thought is if you were extremely low-tech, didn't have access to a computer, only reading, I think the, the commenter said, uh, with the text on the notice you got, uh, give, give them easy access to get to the meeting. So.
One, um, question slash turn about, uh, the upcoming study session. Since we'll have a lot to review in advance, is it possible to get our agenda and rubric as early as possible?
We're, we're trying to do our best. I, I think our objective is to get to you, let me see if I can look at the calendar here. So the meeting is the fourteenth. We wanted to get you materials by the end of next week, which is on or about the third. So you'll have that at least a week and a half at a time.
Thank you. That, that will be, that will be excellent. Very much looking forward to it. And, uh, if anybody is still in the audience, the great time to make your opinions known.
Great.
Assuming we're taking public comment.
Yes, there should be public comment, right, Director?
Yes, with, with any meeting, uh, that you meet per the ground act, there'd be an opportunity for you to take comment, uh, during that meeting.
Alrighty. Well, thank you, everybody. Um, that concludes the meeting of August twenty-fourth, and, um, we'll see you in a couple of weeks.